At this time, will the Community Development Director call roll?
Okay, um, Ms. Naff?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Pariqa?
Here.
Mesmer?
Here.
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Bumgarde is present, but I can't be long in for some minutes. I'm not sure about that, I'm sorry. We'll have to count the actions from now.
All right, on the consent agenda, Agenda Item Number Two is the approval of the minutes of the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes? And are there any comments or corrections? Stop, I'll call.
I move we approve as written.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Three, Unfinished Business, None at This Time. Onto New Business, Number Four, Public Hearing, The Rezoning, BSRZ zero five twenty-four, one three zero four zero, Canaan Drive. We could have the staff report, please?
Uh, the property one three zero four zero, Canaan Drive, has been non-commercial, since the area is accepted as a general development. Prior to being adopted in Unified Development Ordinance, the property was named as C two General Business District. The zoning designation allows for auto repair and auto vehicle parts and supplies retail. The zoning district of C as highway service is allowed for auto sale and service. The area in general was previously zoned as C two building. Then had area up there several set up under the plan. We address that area as Z two. The current zoning district of G C General Commercial is described as providing for intensive commercial development along established plant thoroughfares, which is a residential area. The request is only district of H C, having commercial district, is described as providing for commercial development, parks, and regional markets, all certificates, total fair through the law. Those two in my mind have so much similarity that it's part of the distinction between the two ones that we get into today, actually zoning and gaming users. But this request would be to take that and zone it in general commercial, such that it allows for that facility to be auto repair currently.
All right, at this time, I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
All right, public hearing is open at six thirty-four. All right, at this time, does any member of the public wish to speak for the, in favor of the item? All right, this time, does any member of the public wish to speak against the item? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
I've given some information after the applicants. At the end of last week, set an open reading since it was closed yesterday. I'm not sure if we have some.
All right, at this time, are there any questions for staff?
Is this going to continue as an auto repair shop also?
That's not the intent from my understanding, but it has a base setup, so I can only imagine that we some repairs on the vehicles they're selling maybe, but that was not the intention I was calling.
Okay. And the, the number of cars? You have thirty-one vehicles, that's vehicles for sale or vehicles total?
That would be vehicles for sale. And then he has spaces reserved for customers, parking two with a tent room. And like that coming down, I think there's around eight or ten of them, which he can have spaces provided as well. Uh, that's on the site plan on the back, so. He's got six spaces reserved for customers.
Okay.
And then we, we, we tried to, um, you know, limit what we could in a way of parking for, for vehicles and such to, to keep it, so congested. And he has those spots available.
All right, is the applicant present? Okay, all right. Well, at this time, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So I move.
So seconded.
All right, public hearing is closed at six thirty-six P M. And this time, I'll need a motion.
Any discussion?
Well, then we have to, we have to call for a motion first, and then we can have the discussion, right?
Okay.
Now.
I move we approve the zoning request with staff stipulations as written.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, at this time, is there any discussion amongst the commission?
What, uh, what changes is gonna have to be made? Is, is that a lot of that payment got to be put in, or is it already there?
It's already there.
That's what I thought. So technically, we're not changing the plot at all, we're just changing the ability for that man who's there to do a little different business.
What Mark said as far as the difference between general commercial, highway commercial, I read it, I was like.
So that, that was not something I read, but it, I will. Okay, so staff would lean towards the assist area fitting within heater zone. The majority of difference between the two would be one of two things, the minimum lot size and the intensity of use. The current general commercial that's in now has a six thousand square foot minimum lot size, so a lot smaller, versus the highway commercial, which is fifteen thousand square feet minimum. So again, your lot size is increasing. This lot, though, in question, is actually thirty-seven thousand square feet already, so it exceeds the, the minimum size. And it meets all the other requirements. Uh, it's got good access in and out, the parking's there, the site's already approved. It'll mainly be a change of sign, I don't even know if they're gonna change any.
Changing the zoning, uh, makes it harder to make it a smaller lot and start cutting it into little tiny pieces and spot zoning it too, so.
And with the state, the highway.
Yeah.
Highway commercial.
Is there anything else at this time? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Uh, Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Yes.
Here. Mesmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Zeps?
Yes.
And Mr. Gubauer?
Yes.
And then, will this proceed to the City Council?
Yes, so it proceeds at four tenths of a minute.
All right, thank you. Agenda Item Number Five is the Public Hearing for Special Use Permit, SUP zero three twenty-four. This time, could we have the staff report, please?
The property is located at two three nine two zero West Forty-third, West Coleman Street to the east. Uh, in the City Unified Development Ordinance, Section two point zero three point B states, purpose of this section is to provide for the purposes of reviewing and approving special use permits, where required by the table of laws, which is established in Section two one zero five. Uses requiring special use permit are similar to other uses permitted within a given zoning district.
Sorry, lost my thought there. Or are uses in which the product, processes, mode of operation, or nature of the use may prove detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding built and natural environments. Special use permits can allow for deviations from the approved zoning regulations by placing more stringent requirements upon them and upon recommendation by the Planning Commission and approval by the governing body. Industrial zoning does not typically lend itself to the possible uses as retail space. The staff's understanding that the proposed uses will be more trade oriented than retail, but it would not preclude that use. Any outdoor storage that would or could occur would be seen as similar use to other industrial in the immediate area. It would, though, require screening as listed within the Unified Development Ordinance. They're looking at here is contractor garages, they would have a, and, and the applicant is here, and maybe they can explain it better, but there will be a space for an office within them as well as storage for materials. I kinda alluded to the fact that I don't necessarily see it retail in general, or it as a, as a main use, but what it would allow, we'll say, a plumber or an electrician could have an office and then keep their equipment and their piping and stuff inside their facility as well. They're kinda popping up all around in different forms and fashions, but from my understanding, and, and we can verify this with the applicant, it's, it's just a, um, a shop front more than a storefront. If that makes sense. Leave it at that, talk too much.
All right, at this time.
Is this a hearing?
Uh, it will be, in the moment. I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, public hearing is open at six forty-two P M. All right, at this time, does any member of the public wish to speak in favor of this item? You would approach the microphone and turn it on, and then state your name and address, sir.
Okay, yep, my name is Daniel Erhardt, my address is three seven zero five, West Fifty-second Place, Roland Park, Kansas. Okay.
And you go ahead?
Yeah, okay, so no, we are, uh, we're excited about this project. Uh, what it's gonna entail, uh, you know, what Mark talked about is, um, our focus is gonna be towards the trades, so think plumbers, landscapers, um, contractors, anybody that's basically outgrowing their own garage, uh, and they, they don't have the capacity for a full grown building. These units that each, so we've got four buildings in the site plan, um, there'll be, the units themselves will be twenty feet by fifty foot. Each unit will have a twelve foot by fourteen foot bay door, and then a mandor right next to that. And so each, each building will have twelve units, the units themselves will be a thousand square foot. And, uh, you know, it, we've got an area to the north that'll be parking. And I think that, that's about it. I mean, it, it's very basic, there's nothing, uh, a- as far as the retail aspect of it, we're not planning, there's not gonna be any office, you know, re, office fronts or anything like that, so if they wanted to build a small office in there, they, they certainly could, but.
So you anticipate renting space?
Yes, yes.
And how will people be notified of their ability to rent that?
Uh, we'll, we'll be advertising it, we'll have commercial brokers as well.
Okay.
Yep.
And where will the central office be located? Or renting it?
Uh, there won't be a central office on site.
Okay.
And then the entrance, it'll be electronic keypad to get in the entrance, so each, each tenant will have their code to, to open up the gate to get in, and then obviously they'll have their own, own locks for the doors as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the public wish to speak in favor of this item? Not, does any member of the public wish to speak against?
Like a question for or against?
Depends on the nature of the question, I suppose.
You, you pick.
Yep.
I'm Michael Durman. I'm, I'm, I'm a next door neighbor where the grass pad next door, and, um, I'm an old guy, and I don't understand, um.
Your, the blue box is where they're looking to build.
Yep, I got the blue box.
You're right there, yep, right there with the mouse.
How many, this are, and how many rental units do you have in your store? Forty-eight. Forty-eight, so it's gonna be forty-eight that. So we're gonna have, this isn't, isn't like I got one space moving in, I got forty-eight guys moving in next door with their vehi- vehicles, just with their vehicles, with their hell, and their stuff. Okay, now what is, what's the, uh, what's the site maintenance? Is there any out, is there outdoor storage? No outdoor storage, so they live it up and go home. My wife would probably wanna take me over there and see. All right, so there's, but, but we don't have any outdoor storage, we have tradesmen that come in. Forty-eight, they show up at eight o'clock in the morning, load, unload, drive off-site at five o'clock at night, and, um, go home. And if, if I have a problem on the site, okay, I got four pickup trucks and six guys, and they're all drunk, raising hell, okay, who do I call?
Please.
Call us, please.
Please.
Yep. Okay, all right.
Yeah, start with them. I know where you're going.
I, I just, I mean, I know Coleman, okay? If, if, if there's a, if something's going on at Coleman's and you wanna go talk to Coleman, you go talk to Coleman, okay? Something's at the grass pad, you walk in the front door and talk to the grass pad, and, um, and I'm just.
Are you asking if someone will be on-site all the time?
Yeah, who's the den mother that keeps track of the forty-eight guys and the forty-eight pickup trucks and the forty-eight separate enterprises that are going on, on that property? There is no den mother.
Well, there would be a landlord, but you're right, as far as on-site, yes, there would not.
Have you guys had good experience with this kinda setup before?
This would be the first one in town, so this would be the first proposed setup like this.
I'm not in the planning business, I mean, I mean, you're the guy, okay? But I'm just old and cranky, and when I look at that, that's, I gotta, I got an on-site, you know, who's.
They won't be able to park a bunch of cars and stuff in there, because the fire department still have to have access and things like that, it's not like the whole center would be full of cars. Now, I can't, I can't speak to what the plans might be, but I would envision the main contractor coming there, picking up his stuff and meeting everybody on the job, I can't verify that, but again, the fire department will need access, emergency services, so it's not, it won't be lined with vehicles.
Look, if you tell me it works, okay, and it doesn't get out of hand, then I'm a happy man.
I'll do my best, that's all.
I mean, that, I mean, but, I mean, that's, that, it's the, it's a practical question. Do I wanna get along with my neighbors? You bet. And, and these guys look like swell fellows, and Coleman's terrific, and, but if it's Coleman, you just have to walk in the front door and ask for somebody whose last name is Coleman, and, and, um. And, and I, I.
How big are each of the storage units?
We'll wait and see, I guess.
So they do, they do fifteen stipulations, but none of them really pertain to the amount of parking that I'm under.
But yeah. You know, I wish I walked around so lucky. Had a call on the cops, I call you. Well, I'll call cops first, and then call them. You got, you got, uh, fourteen.
Okay, so each is an exterior building, and you walk in and you have interior.
So is there anyone else that would like to speak for, against, or ask a question?
So, let me just, I'm trying to get my head around this, so it's four large buildings, each one has twelve individual storage units inside of it, and so it's not like there's gonna be, is there designated parking where the guys pull up, there's twelve trucks in a parking lot, and they each walk in, grab their stuff, come back out, is, is that kinda the idea of this, or?
There's gonna be, they can park in front of their own door, or they can pull their vehicle in if they want.
So it has exterior facing doors where they can just pull straight up to it? Okay, so it's like twelve units inside underneath a single roof with twelve different doors? So it's just storage units, okay?
Yeah, just think, big storage unit. That's kinda what I thought.
Yeah.
And then you also mentioned office space potentially. Inside the, the, the storage slash business office.
Maybe I'm off, but that's.
But, okay, so we're all on the same page.
How I had it set up in my mind as I prepared things is that's what I, maybe I took a little too much from the applicant, but that was kinda the way I thought it was Roland was.
Essentially, instead of having a very large space.
If this is approved, they would be able to allow, allowed to office out of the space if they, if they could. Now, there is a stipulation that does, they know residence, no residential living at all, so that's a stipulation that is written out, so. Some of the, some of the carriage houses, as they call of them now, down in Johnson County and stuff, are like man caves and.
There's just, there's zero res, zero overnight stays in that district, right? Okay.
Correct.
All right.
And I assume that Coleman has been notified.
Uh, Mr. Coleman's actually selling them that property, I believe.
They are selling it, I expect.
Everyone within two hundred feet is required to be notified, and they all received. This was actually proposed to come to you guys in September of last year. Um, I don't imagine you guys remember the agenda, but we, we pulled it off basically that day, and these gentlemen took it over from there. So there was a proposal for six buildings, and they took it down to four, so.
All right, at this time, are there any questions for the applicant?
I have none for the applicant. I thought Water One, Johnson County, had a utility easement to there, and I, I was always under the impression that where these gentlemen are building, that's where the easement was. And I don't care one way or the other, I just think we oughta.
So, in a strange turn of events, an old high school friend of mine works for Water One, I had no idea, regardless, we worked hand in hand to get things figured out, and if you, if Larissa, we'll just pull it down a little bit, you can see the easement, uh, sorry, the other way, Larissa, the easements are right there across the top of this, right here on this photo, is their easement, they'll be right up to it. They've been in communication with Water One, we've, we've all worked together to, to get to this, but you are correct, there is a huge Water One easement through there.
And another thing I've thought about is, uh, there is no indication that there's gonna be forty-eight pickups drive every, every morning. Some of these spaces can be used for storage, and, which means that people might not come but once a week, right? So I don't, I don't think the traffic that you have thought might be there is probably gonna give you a problem. I'm done.
All right, at this time, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
All right, public hearing is closed at six fifty-four P M. This time, I'll call for a motion for the special use permit.
I move we approve the special use permit as written with staff stipulations.
Second?
Seconded.
All right, at this time, is there any discussion on the commission? Okay, then I'll call for a vote, please.
Mr. Zeps?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Mesmer?
Yes.
Mr. Pariqa?
Yes.
Ms. Naff? Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
And Mr. Gubauer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
All right, and then this will also proceed.
Yes, sir.
To the City Council.
February tenth, City Council Meeting for Final Action.
All right. Moving, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, the Public Hearing for the Unified Development Ordinance, BSZ, Z, O, O four twenty-four. We could have the staff report, please?
Okay. Uh, in an effort to avoid potential constant conflicts with our current U D O and the need for ongoing variance requests through the Board of Zoning Appeals, staff has created the following zoning district, E N T, Entertainment and or Amusement District. Staff gathered information regarding typical ride heights of other amusement parks, both locally, nationally, and around the world, gathered input from the development design team regarding the proposed rides at the Mattel Project, searched several other jurisdictions' zoning codes, not only locally but nationally as well, and compared the current plan with the one that was proposed previously, which is known as the Bonner Crossing. That one had a multi-story hotel, the event, um, the E Arena, and an amphitheater, and some other things like that on that site, if you guys remember that one, it's a few years old, but it was, it was gonna be a big project up there as well. This particular location has been proposed for amusement or entertainment uses in the past, given the entertainment facilities nearby and access to the interstate and state highway systems, it is staff's opinion that this area is well suited for similar types of development. The zoning district will allow for a less cumbersome path to similar developments. Staff has reviewed similar zoning districts and loosely based this, loosely based the district dimensional standards on those utilized in Branson, Missouri, while incorporating our own Unified Development Ordinance as well. Discussion between staff and the development team with Epic Entertainments revolved around a planned development district. Those districts, though, are not allowed to deviate from the stated standards without requesting variances as well. They furthermore would require public hearings anytime changes were made to an approved plan, meaning if a plan was presented to the commission and council and approved, and any significant changes in site layout would then trigger a new public hearing and the process to repeat itself, potentially several times throughout the development of this particular project, significantly impacting the timeframe involved in the planning process. This district does not deviate from setback requirements nor the uses allowed within the district. The attachments in the packet include the district requirements, the proposed dimensional standards, the table of uses with the E N T listed, parking standards, and the definitions of aerial displays. The appropriate sections have been highlighted in your packet. This is information that we spoke about in a work session at the end of last year. I took you guys' comments and the input and went back. Now, while a lot of this did stem from the proposed Mattel Project, that corner has gone through several changes, and with things that are happening there, this district would allow for a path forward in, um, similar ventures. Uh, it is not, I'll say, it's not rezoning or anything like that, it's establishing a new district that can be used. I put in, there's an acreage limit, they must be at least fifteen acres. There is design guidelines for the district itself. The uses that are allowed are in the table, um, they're similar to most commercial uses. There is a few additional ones, but nothing new, there is no new uses, uh, let me rephrase that, aerial displays, we did add that as a new use so that we could have it defined, so that is a new use on the table. Other than that, though, all of the uses remained the same. What I did was look at what commercial uses could fit into this type of district. The dimensional standards have the setbacks, have the heights of buildings, so the hotels, we have taken up to ten stories or a hundred feet. The ride heights, we went to a hundred and twenty feet or three hundred if it's fifty percent or more transparent, for a roller coaster, more or less. The commercial and event venues, along with the civic, remained the same as we currently have. Theaters went up to a hundred feet tall, and then the aerial displays are, are anywhere up to four hundred feet, that is the cap put on by the FAA. There is also some allowances for recreational vehicle parks included in that zoning district. They're just a little bit different than our current RV park zoning districts, they're a little, um, a little more dense. The parking pad sites for the RVs remain the same as in our current RV park standards, so there was just a, a few deviations on ride height, hotel height, the, a theater component, and the aerial displays. Parking, there was a change in that from, and this all, again, ties back to the district. Currently, you can't have any more than twelve spaces in a row without having islands. With the vast amount of parking that can go on with these, we went twenty-four spaces, so they basically doubled, and then they have to have parking islands, with landscaping in them, uh, allows for more, more parking in general. And the definition for aerial display, so the district requirements, the dimensional standards, the zoning table with the applicable uses, the parking standards, and the aerial display definition. Of this would have to go through any other rezoning process. These regulations aren't pinned to one certain area, they. These regulations aren't pinned to one certain area, they can go anywhere. And it would obviously follow any other rezoning process. So they would have to come forward, they would obviously have to meet the requirements, and we would have to look to see where they're proposing it before we move too far. But again, that's typical of any other rezoning, similar to the one we did earlier today.
So essentially what you're doing is we're creating a thing called, a set of standards that defines what an entertainment district would be. It's not for one specific thing. It's just so that, because we don't have one, we don't have to piecemeal every single regulation every time somebody wants to build something. And that's all we're doing is defining an entity for the code.
Yep. A set of standard, set of, set of standard guidelines, yep.
All right, at this time, I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, open the public hearing at 7:02. This time, does any member of the public wish to speak in favor of this item? All right, any member of the public wish to speak opposed to this item? Okay. At this point, I will, does anybody have any questions for the staff? Okay, shall we close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, public hearing is closed at 7:02. That was quick. This time, I'll call for a motion.
I move we approve the definition, the code of, or the Unified Development- God dang it. We, I approve we approve this thing as written.
Unified Development-
Ordinance. Ordinance is the word, I couldn't remember, thank you. Move we approve it as written.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, this time, is there any discussion amongst the commission?
We've been staring at this thing for-
Months.
Six months, we've had here, open hearings, we've had working sessions.
All right.
I didn't see anything that you added. You, like you said, you increased the height of a couple hotel, the hotel, a little bit.
And again, that would be specific to this district, so any other hotel would still be limited to the three stories.
Essentially, what we've done is create something called an entertainment district with a set of standards into which somebody can just request a entertainment district instead of having to say, I would like to have a place to build one 100-foot hotel with aerial displays and a go-kart track. And so we've been staring at this thing for months.
All right, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Okay. Mr. Zeps?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Perica?
Yes.
Ms. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Mesmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Gabauer?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. It will also move to the city council in February.
All right, agenda item number seven has been withdrawn temporarily or permanently?
Yeah, so if you'd like, I will, I will read this little statement.
I mean, we can, we all have it, so.
Yeah, I just-
Okay.
For the audience members.
Absolutely.
At the request of the applicant with staff's concurrence, this item was requested to be removed. In order to move forward, staff and the applicant agreed to wait for action to be taken on the previous agenda item, which would have been the creation of the entertainment district, in order to ensure that they could move through fairly easily. So that rezoning was pulled off of this agenda and will probably move forward in March. We have to have publication and things like that, so we may not see it for another month or two.
Okay.
But we wanted to ensure that this was going to get through or be recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
All right. So then on to agenda item number eight, open agenda, none at this time. Agenda item number nine is the Community Development Director's report.
A February meeting, we've got another Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. It'll be a setback variance in Lake of the Forest. I think if you guys are fairly familiar with Lake of the Forest, those lots are really weird designed, more or less just went with the lay of the land. So there'll be a request for variance on one of those lots for a room addition. We have a replat for 1715 and 1725 South 138. That's at the corner of 138th and Willard. There is a main structure and then basically we call it a tiny house. Right behind it would be an ADU. They're going to separate that large lot into three. There's plenty of room, so we'll have three different lots there. Two will have structures on them and one will be vacant. And the rezoning for the Mattel Adventure Land, that won't actually move until March. And then we will be looking at a special use permit renewal for the Bonner Springs Rock Quarry. APAC has requested to extend their special use permit that expires this year and move forward. So that will be coming to you guys too next month. Those will be-
So you're going to have to, first of all, notify me that that's going to be happening. And second of all, I'm going to have to recuse myself, but I will definitely be here to speak as a private citizen.
I kind of, yeah. I, that was, that was a step that I'd already thought about taking, was we're going to have to ask you to recuse yourself.
Yeah, I will have to recuse myself. That just means we need to have enough people here. Because I can't be a part of that.
So really, we'll have the BZA and to the replat, it's not public hearing, the special use permit will be a public hearing, so. Should be somewhat of a quicker, yeah. Yep. That would be, you're right. Yep. We're going to, we're going to set a timer, we're going to set a timer that evening, though, for Mr. Zeps.
Now, with the timer, we'll just-
Okay, I'm done talking.
Wrap it up. All right.
Sorry.
Is there, is there anything else?
I don't have anything else. Been looking through the comprehensive plan, need some updates and stuff. We've, since our zoning districts changed and things like that, there's, I started going through it the other day, so you guys will start seeing some changes, whether I'll hit them all at once or not, I don't know, we'll see, but we'll get those changes moving. Other than that, townhomes up behind Feldman's are being occupied now. There's individuals living in the first three, they may even be full, I'm not for sure. They, they were, the project fell so far behind that they actually had to house individuals offsite. So everybody got everything together and they're, they're in there now. Still moving forward with the apartments proposed up at I-70 and Kansas Avenue. The Bonner Springs Senior Villas are ready to kick off, I think. They got their plan review and permits ready, right? Okay, I still have a couple outstanding things on my end, so they'll be ready to start moving pretty soon. The apartments down here on the corner of Oak and Front have got an earth change permit. Ground will probably start getting moved here next month, it's our understanding. Just trying to think of some of the other projects we have going on. Those are two of the biggest, three of the biggest ones. Got, I haven't been out there recently, but they've got two shell buildings at least, I think, stood up out at Compass, out there at 110th and Riverview. They're moving right along on that. That's pretty much all I have for project updates that I can think of.
All right, we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:09.
Thank you, Sherri.